I guess I'm concerned about garbage not getting picked up then.
And that's never happened so far. I mean, I'm all, I'm just, I'm just making the point that, that again, the way that these contracts typically work is that the city has an exclusive provider and then the city and the provider work together to set rates that are acceptable in the community and they also work together to then make sure that people are paying the rates that have been fairly negotiated between the city and Hawkeye Sanitation. And when there's someone that comes along and says, "I'm, I'm not sure that this is fair in my case," they have a way to go to the city and to get that resolved. And that's, but, but the city and, and their provider work hand in hand, not only to set the rates, but also to enforce those rates if those rates are fair as applied. So that people who are getting service at a rate that was negotiated between the city and the provider are paying what's, what's been negotiated.
But I think by them taking back the billing, they took that away. They removed the city from the whole commercial. We had no idea what you're, what they're even billing, so how can we be involved in the collection of it?
Well, that's, I, I agree that, that when you have a part of a contract that says the rates are negotiated, that's, that's, that's the point of this is, is to try to see if that can be fixed going forward. I think that that was what got these rates all non-uniform over time and the city was billing and collecting for rates that were not uniform over time.
Because that's what Hawkeye told us to bill for. We got the billing from Hawkeye.
Understood. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that it was the city's pricing that, that ended up on the invoice. I'm just saying it was the individual negotiations that got this out of whack from a uniform standpoint. And this was a proposal, um, when we initially gave the economic rationale for it, we were looking at, you know, what's the, what's the response to this? And then we put it into a contract that is structurally different than the contract that you currently have in order to not have these problems going forward. That was the point.
I'd like to ask, why, Ross, why did you take the billing back?
Probably at the time it was more to manage the, to make sure that each one individually uniform and that enforced and managed pricing a little better to watch both and how it was going. I have no problem with whether we keep it or whether we don't. We just need to, you know, make sure that the pricing is, is uniform.
I mean, certainly if we're going to agree to a contract that, that has rates in it, then we have to do the billing, I think.
You know, we were paying for the, doing the billing and adding it to, for years through the water, you know, through our water bills. I have no problem with it continuing to stay that way, but we have to.
It was just curious that you took it back and then that's when this big increase took place. So it was like you were trying to hide it from the city that you're going to do these.
You can't hide it. Yeah. There's no way.
Well, you hid it for two months and then all of a sudden hit all the business customers.
It's not gonna, when you raise the prices, now everybody's gonna know. Just like, that's when.
But if you would've told us to increase these rates, we would've questioned it at that time before to make sure that you were negotiating with the customers and following the contract, so.
Well, this, uh, our proposal that we have now, has anybody really looked at it?
Yeah.
I think there's.
Reductions?
Yeah.
The reductions, this, the sheet that Michelle converted, the one thing you have.
If there's one thing that, that I wish could be done, is I wish we could undo what got us here. I, I haven't figured out any way to do that.
Well, a rate, a credit or refund would be.
I understand. And that's, that's part of, and, and so to the point that was made here, and I, and I, and I see that the request is for a creditor refund, there's also been a request to negotiate with 90, with 90 accounts. Is the city's position that that's how you want us to do it? I mean, um, to go to these people to implement new rates after a negotiation, to not tell the city what those rates might be, just let them get out there? Or would you rather see the rates and then have a mechanism, you know, start implementing those rates and then have people be able to come to you and say, "I still don't like the rate." Because I, again, I like the idea of going to the city council first. That's, that wasn't done before, I get that. I'd fix that going forward. I like the idea of going to city council first and saying, "Hey, here's what we're thinking about. Here's why we think it makes sense. If there is a dispute with a customer later, here's how we can resolve it."
Right. If you're doing that to provide us with your proposals, that's one thing. If you're asking us to agree with it, that's another. So I mean, if, if these, right now, this last proposal, none of the business people have seen, I still stand with my personal opinion that this is between you and them. And once you agree, you negotiate and you both agree on that, then Ross would tell us, "Here's their bill."
And up until that time, and, and I'm just wondering if there's a middle ground there where you can, you can tell us that, you know? I mean, right now, when you have residential rates, um, they're brought to the city, the city agrees on the rates they're set in the contract, like commercial is done that way. And our thought here was to migrate this piece over, just the way the rest of it is. And recognizing that's, that's a transition, that that's not the way it was done, we understand that. But is there a way to have the city, um, look at the rates and to say, "Look, you know, we, we tentatively think these are acceptable to us, but we want to have the ability for people, because we're transitioning to this kind of a system, to come and tell us whether they like it or not?"
I'm not going to answer for the council on that. I gave you my opinion, I guess. So if we need to, if we need to talk again in closed session, can we do that tonight?
Yeah, you can. You can go back.
Let me just, let me just propose something for you to think about on that point. And I'm not suggesting you have to do it one way or the other. One way for us to do it is we go and we talk to these 90 accounts and there's, there's a possibility some people will not engage in that. And there's, there's a possibility that, and hopefully a number of them will say, "Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it." But I think we're going to be kind of all the way across the board. And then we have to make a decision, do we, you know, what do we do when someone either won't engage or just says no? And we're kind of, there's nothing under the contract how to resolve that. Right now, we'll send them an invoice, see if they pay. That is one way to do it. It's, it's not a real orderly way to do it.
It's not negotiating.
Pardon?
It's not negotiating.
Right. If we go to them and they don't, they won't negotiate with us, or they just take a hard line in the sand and then, you know, the contract says you got to negotiate, it takes two, two parties to do that. And my, my fear on that approach is we're going to be with these 90 accounts all across the board. Another approach is to say, "Give us your feedback on these rates as a council. We recognize that not all the customers, some customers are going to be fine with it. Hopefully it's 75 or 80% by the time we figure out the rates. And if you have, you know, like the, like the request for a refund, we can take some of that stuff into account and, and give you another updated set of rates. We, we implement the rates. We, we tell the customers that we've got new rates coming up. We have, and, and if you tell us, if we're going to do it that way, we want a dispute resolution mechanism for customers to come to us." That is a more orderly way, I think, to go about it than to try to just go to 90 accounts and, um, have results that are all across the board. That's all I'm suggesting. It's not a, it's not, it's just a difference in the way you go about it.
Can I ask? Go ahead, Michelle. Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So it's a flat 20, 35 per cubic yard per pickup. Would, wouldn't it be cheaper, um, so if you have a two yard, it doesn't really cost you double for Hawkeye to come and pick it up? Like a decreasing amount by the bigger dumpster? Do you see what I'm saying? You know, the 20, 35 for the first yard and then the second yard is only at $19, you know? So some of these big accounts that have the bigger dumpsters aren't paying as much? Or is that tied into the tonnage that you think is in that?
It's, it's all a matter of whether total dollars, when, when we put the proposal together and we, we, we tried to look at the costs across the board. Now, if you, my, I guess my answer to that is you can move the dollars around in a different way on pricing like that, but you still got to get the same amount of revenue in, in order to offset the costs. So if you do that, then, um, then you're going to have to pick up the dollars that you're losing somewhere else. This, this approach here is designed so when you add up all the revenues from all 90 accounts, that it's commensurate with the costs that are in the business. And you can move that around a lot of different ways. You can say, okay.
But I'm just thinking, the ones that are getting the highest increases, are they the ones with the bigger dumpsters, you know? I, I get what you're saying. You need the total amount, but are you hitting those big customers harder than?
Right.
You know, they're taking the bigger hit.
Right. So I mean.
I don't think they are. I think, but who's taking the bigger hit are the ones that, since the eighties, haven't had an increase as much. They are the ones that are taking the big hits, you know? Not necessar, let's say for instance, some of the customers that we may have that have had large dumpsters, you know, we talk about large dumpsters, that have been relatively new to get them, they're probably more in line with our rates because we, you know, we think about what we pay for the dumpster, we think about the cost of operating and, and it's in there. It's the old customers that have had a rate that hadn't not changed in 20 years. They have been ones that.
So you, you can ask us to compare this and I, I understand that, but we're, I mean, we can't go compare it to a gallon of milk, this gallon of milk to that gallon of milk. I've heard from one customer what Shimick was going to charge them, drastically less than what you're showing here. Um, and again, the customer told me that, I assume it's accurate. What have you done in other cities where you haul garbage today, Ross? What other cities do you haul garbage in? May I ask that first?
We haul, uh, everything in this county with the exception of Riceville.
Okay.
Uh, then we haul in Winneshie County some and the Decor area a little. Then we're the largest hauler in Clayton County, which would include Elkhater and some of the smaller communities there.
Mm-hmm.
Up to the Dubuque County line.
Okay.
So.
So, and those are for cities or counties, correct? That you pick up?
Yes.
So what, what's, what's going on there with, with what your, your fees are and stuff?
Our fees are, we've attempted to do the same thing across the board, you know, to make it uniform. And yes, they've been raised. Everybody is in the same role.
So you pick up in Elma and Prodevin and Lime Springs?
We pick up.
Chester?
Prodevin, Lime Springs, Elma, we do not.
Okay. Uh, Lime Springs and Prodevin, you said?
Yeah.
And are you, have you given them the same rates you're giving us?
We are attempting to raise everything to be standardized.
So whatever rate we would pay or they would pay, everybody pays?
Essentially, with, with one exception is the distance from the landfill, how far you have to go, you know, the cost of fuel.
Yep.
To run to these.
Yeah. So Lime Springs is 12 miles farther than.
Correct. And the labor, you know?
Yeah.
The closer we get to the, to the landfill, sometimes things get a little cheaper.
Yeah. So where I'm, where I guess, part of my, one of my points is, yeah, you can ask us to look at these and agree with them, but we have nothing to compare it to. I don't know, I mean, I know what Shimick told one person.
For instance, it's difficult for you guys, and I understand that. You compare it to what someone says that they can get a rate from, from Shimick. But when I look at Shimick's rates everywhere else, we're equal. So it's one of these things that he can come in and do what we are trying not to do and offer a rate that's a little lower to start out to somebody and then eventually it'll, it'll get up because he's not going to lose money forever. Or, you know, I mean, but it can be lower when, I can call people over toward Ridgeway and the rates are equal. So I can't, I can't answer that question for you. I mean, you'd have to call all the other haulers in the area and, and let them know who you are.
And that's something I would do, I guess, before you, I would give you the answer if I think this is fair. I mean, that's something I would do.
Well, that's one of the reasons why, you know, I'm bringing it up. I'm not afraid to, to look at what they do.
Yeah. So do we, is there any other comments? Do we want to go into a closed session or do we want to leave it as we?
I just wanted to get on something that Ross said earlier. He made the comment about 30%. Is that 30% off of this rate?
I think that's the, is that the old rate, right?
This, this is the rate that?
Or the current rate.
Off the sheet that he provided that you broke down, correct?
The 30% is the average increase from this first column to the last column.
Understood. I'm just verifying that. He's, he said something to make this go away, about 30%. And I just wanted to see if that was in addition to the proposed rate that they had already given us or if that was a caveat to be added on at the end, so.
The comment I would have is, one of the reasons that the customer would stonewall negotiating with Ross is because the council has not yet made a public statement, mainly because I think we haven't decided, um, as to whether the contract is exclusive. In other words, would we allow Shimick in? And if I were Fairway and I hadn't heard that, I would stonewall them. So part of our thought process has to be, are we going to make an announcement one way or the other?
Sure.
Because otherwise you will get stonewalled by everyone.
And I, I agree. I mean, I'm not opposed to us determining that and whatever the outcome is, maybe send a letter to the business owner for instance.
And I think, I think, I think if they got the reduction, even if they're not, generally the reduction that we had proposed will satisfy a lot of people. It may not satisfy everybody. You know, some people, you know, if, if they think that they're going to be able to maintain the rates or whatever that, that, that they have been suggested by another hauler, you know?
Gary, did you get your answer?
Well, if those 30% was already figured in over in this other.
I'm not sure what you're looking at.
I'm not sure what 30% he said. I don't remember.
Did I misrepresent something? I, when he was talking there earlier, he just.
Maybe that was the.
I think they dropped the new rate by 30%.
Yeah. So this, so this column, this column is 30% lower than this.
Okay.
I misunderstood it. The proposed, the proposed rate is 30% lower.
The new rate?
Yeah. On average. I see, understood it.
Just maybe, um, the, the rate before the price increases, and then these were, so these had to be averaged because everybody's, you know, per, per yard, per pickup, or on average across the accounts, it was $15.59 per cubic yard per pickup per week. Okay. And then the prices increased and then we made a proposal for reducing those prices. That reduced price then is $20.35 per cubic yard per pickup per week. And so that allows you to compare the, the rates in effect in January 1 of 2022 to what's being proposed now. If that, if that helps kind of give some.
And I think when you said it was a reduction of 30%, at least what you said before is the intermediate rates that you're currently charging went from 15, 59 originally to $30 and then dropped it to 20, 35. So dropping from 30 to 20 is a 33% rate.
So what are they paying right now, this rate?
Yep.
Okay.
This second rate, yep.
Sorry.
The, the new rate for 1 of 22.
Correct.
So what would the council like?
Can I ask one quick question from Ms. Eldon? Because it was an intriguing point you bring up about the larger accounts. I'm assuming that the larger accounts are, maybe I should make this assumption, but they're maybe the most vulnerable about the increases. I don't know if that's true.
So that's why I was just asking. And I did, I haven't looked close enough to see if that's where the.
And the thing, the thing that I was interested in, in your comment, is that when, when, when you look at this, you look at it across all 90 accounts, what is the revenue that's going to come in across all 90 accounts compared to the cost? It doesn't necessarily matter how that revenue is, you know, if you can get to the same bottom line number, you could theoretically say for larger dumpsters, the rate is going to be different per yard than for smaller dumpsters.
Because my, my thought was if you could get by with a four yard dumpster and only have it dumped twice a month, and that would be cheaper than having a two yard dumpster dumped every week, you know, that type of thing, because it would be less labor for Hawkeye to come only every other week rather than every week. So, you know, by them saving operating costs, could the customer then save by having a bigger one rather than a small one picked up more often? I, just a question. I don't know.
I agree. And, and like I said, all of that is, is, is a viable way to look at it because at the end of the day, just so the total revenues keep pace with the increase in costs, if, if, if the point, if part of the point is if you have a bigger business and you have used a bigger dumpster, then maybe the, the rate per yard on that dumpster could be less than the rate of a smaller dumpster at a smaller business. But you'd have to run the numbers. The only thing that matters ultimately for the business is that they've taken enough revenue to cover the increasing costs.
So in that case, are you going to lower hypothetically the big dumpster and raise the little dumpster to offset that?
So long as you get to the same revenue number, it is the goal, right? So that, so that you can try to figure out, and in that, that, that may be one way you'd have to do it. What, what you can't do is take all, all the large customers, their rates, cut them in half, and then you're really short on what your costs are. So like I said, it went from 15, 59 as of January 1 to, to 20, 35. If there is a way that we can do that in a uniform way, give people an opportunity so it's not set in stone and give people an opportunity to see those rates, well, we can make an attempt to talk them. But at least as far as I was concerned, um, and in talking with Ross, he agrees that we wanted to come to the council first with the rates, which is probably what should have happened before, but we're doing it now and we wanted to do that and exhaust that, talk with you about this first and then come up with a plan how we take this to the community and hopefully fix this going forward. So if, if you need to go into closed session and, and tell us how you want to go about it, the only thing I'm suggesting to you if, and then we'll do what you say. But if the, but if the point is to go to each one of these customers and try to negotiate when certain things aren't resolved, that could, that could be very inefficient and it could not get us, it could potentially not get us to the goal I think everybody wants to get.
But you just said one thing that I caught, is if you did go to each one of these customers and what was brought up here is where they, they maybe have a smaller dumpster and they're dumping it once a week, one, you know, once a day or twice a week or three times, and you can go there and negotiate and we'll say, "Well, wait a minute here. We probably could save you some money by, hey, let's go with a bigger dumpster and we're only dumping you once a week instead of three times a week or once a month." That's something that we can't communicate that to you, that you can.
And that.
We usually offer that to people all the time.
Because I know what you were saying. You're, you're looking at it from a standpoint like, "We have to make this amount of money and, uh, if we're not making the cost of this stop, then we have to pay, pass this cost on to them no matter what." Well, I mean, I think that you have to look at the customer too and it's like, if you can save you money and this rate would be lower, they would be open to that.
And, and, and that's a good point. What I would suggest to you from, from talking to Ross and his sons, that that is a process that goes on in the ordinary course of the business all the time, even outside of this particular contract issue. There are many times when a business will talk to Julian, talk to Lucas, talk to Ross, and they'll say, "Hey, you know, this is getting kind of expensive for us." And so over the years, people have kind of right-sized how much they need and how often they need to have it picked up. But those discussions, those just happen in the ordinary course. By and large, the vast majority of these 90 accounts are at a pickup and a size that's appropriate for their business. But, you know, it's not to say that, that a few people couldn't make some adjustments, but I'm just suggesting that over the years, that, that, those discussions, that's just part of the business.
Okay. Yeah. What would the council like to do next?
Go into closed session.
Go into closed session?
All right.
My preference?
And that's.
Yep.
Alex?
Yeah.
Would you be okay if we snuck a couple chairs out in the waiting area?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Trainer?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Looks good?
Yes.
Any card?
Yes.
Michelle, do you want these back?
Just treat them confidentially.
I was interested in them.
Ross, do you want these back?
No. No, you can leave it. I mean, I can take them if you want them, but I, I just wanted you guys to be.
Right. And I mean, it is a little, I mean, it's confidential, I guess, to some people. So if you want, if you want mine back, you can have it. If you don't, I understand.
I just wanted you guys to feel that it's going to change. How much it changed in a year or less.
Okay.
Okay. Paul, uh, first off, acknowledge, city's got two proposals for Hawkeye. They realize neither of these are, are perfect. I think there's never going to be a perfect solution to this. So the first option, the city's willing to consider and they're not going to negotiate any further than I, I think everybody's ready to be done and you guys just need to think about it. Option A is, um, agree to the current proposal that you provided with the rates, and there is some cleanup language, um, but fairly minor. It's the, the rate issue that, uh, we need to find out if we can reach any agreement. Agree to the, the rates you proposed for the commercial.
Heavy commercial.
Heavy commercial, heavy commercial, but only for one year. And the agreement is after one year, heavy commercial only, that contract with Hawkeye ends. Continue on with the residential and the light commercial for the remainder of the contract, but it would be, it would be open, just to be clear, to other haulers after one year. Option B is accept the contract that you proposed for the full rest of the term with, again, some minor cleanup of some, of some language that we can get to if we agree on this. Subject to and conditioned on a refund or credit for the difference between the new proposed rate and the rate that went into effect in, we think it's June 2022. But.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say that last part again. How do you calculate the refund?
The refund would be the difference between the, the rate that's proposed that you guys provided compared to the rate increase that was, I'll say unilaterally imposed by Hawkeye this year on the customers.
On option A, the, the rate for one year would be for 2023?
Correct.
And then after that, the heavy.
And then after that, the heavy commercial is no longer exclusive?
Correct.
And option B is, um, contract for the rest of the term as we proposed, subject to a refund for 2022, um, between the rate that is proposed, which is the $20.35 for that amount, and what was billed and collected, once the new rate, once the new rates in 2022 went into effect?
Correct.
And we could provide an example of that.
Yeah. And, you know, I, the, the council's negotiating in good faith. This is all subject to an actual vote. This is, this isn't an ordinance, so it's just a contract. So you would still have to have an agenda item if we came to an agreement on the terms. Um, just so you know that, just procedurally, there would have to be a vote to, to formally approve that, but we're just trying to see if we can even get to a point where we can, where we're in agreement.
And obviously, these are things that are always best when you reduce it to writing.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Um, we, we, and it's, it's a late hour right now, so I'm not going to ask for any further comments on, there were other changes to the contract that added some, you know, dispute resolution, so how you handle that.
Yeah.
I'm going to assume we're going to table that. This is the heart of it.
That's right.
And then is the, is, is what you're communicating that you want us to consider option A or B? And then, uh, depending which way we go, if we go one way or the other, whatever, put that in writing in the current draft, you submit that to Cresco. Is that correct?
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll proceed from there.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, because there, you know, there's some things for us to think about, but we will do our best to turn it quickly, keep this process moving, okay? Um, I do want to say on behalf of my client, appreciate all the hours everybody's put into this, and all the good faith in, um, and we'll try to get back as soon as we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Do you think you have anything by our meeting on Monday, or is that too fast to turn around? So we have a, kind of a small agenda on Monday?
It's going to be difficult by Monday, and I'm, I'm heading into a trial on Tuesday, and so that's just catching me at a bad time, and then I'm out of town on Friday, so I think Monday, I don't want to make a commitment and then I'll be able to meet it. I will try to get it as soon as I can, but I, I just don't feel comfortable guaranteeing you have it done Monday. I will, if there's any way that we can, we will, but I would, I think, probably not by the next meeting.
Okay.
But we'll try to do as quickly as we can.
And just for your information, if the next, in January, we switched our council meetings, so they're going to be on the 2nd and the 4th Mondays?
Okay.
On, just in January.
The 9th and the 23rd.
And I can reach out to you about that and, and copy you, John, obviously, and we can figure out. Um, if there's any way that it can be done by Monday, I will try, but I just don't want to make a commitment that I won't be able to meet. Okay? Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Have a good evening.
Washington, Michigan?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Washington, Michigan?
And Jan seconded?
Crainer?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Lewis Good?
Yes.
Carney?
Yes.
Is there anything you can give them, a prepared statement, that they can, when somebody calls in, so our stuff is uniform, and answers at this point?